To our Monday, April 28 meeting at Township Hall, I know there's millions of Americans watching, and I hope you like our new bright green seats. They look very comfortable and very bright. So if you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, there we are. So tonight, we have some nice acknowledgements, but before we get started, a couple things. Our trustee Val Murray had a medical condition last Tuesday evening, rushed to the hospital. She had an aneurysm, and she went through surgery, and it was successful, which is some, it's a miracle, really. And we've been in communication with her husband, Bob, and also with, I think, one of our trustees, Chris. You've been in touch with Val, talking to her. This is really an incredible recovery, to have surgery on your brain and to come back. We're just very thankful for Val and her husband, and grateful. You can never say enough prayer sometimes, and we were all just kind of sitting quietly because it's a private situation, but she's in good health. She's in, under recovery, and she'll probably be out for a little while, but we'll look forward to having Val back. And if you know her, you want to send her a note, I'm sure she'll appreciate that, or Bob. So having said that, we'll be short a trustee probably for a little while as she recovers, but we'll look forward to her coming back. Also, one of our longtime employees is retiring, and this will be her last meeting. And she has done so much for our community, but so much for our planning and building department, that I just wanted to let Patty Volker know how much we really appreciate her and enjoy her, and she's done wonders for our community. And Patty, you're sitting in the back, so would you please stand for a minute so we can give you a little applause? And you will be missed, and thank you so much for your service. You've really built a department, and, boy, we're going to miss you. But keep your phone on, please. Thank you. All right, having said all that, the first item on the agenda is public comment. We have a microphone set up on a single stand to my right, your left. If there's anything you'd like to come to address to the trustee, now is your time. And do you need a little hand with that microphone? Oh, you're good. Yes, and just introduce yourself and your address, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm Judy Bateman. I'm a voter service coordinator for the League of Women Voters. I'm retiring now, but I was for many years. I live in Huntington Woods, 1049 Hotel. I came here because Steve Broda had this crew that had been so meaningful to me. So I want to register for the other way I can. In my many years of coordinating candidate forums all over Oakland County, no person or communications department has been as cooperative and reliable as Steve Broda and his crew. One phone call or email, and I was certain someone would be at the candidate forum to record it. Even if my request was outside his control territory, he would try to send the crew or recommend someone else that he knew. I want to thank him and the whole crew for helping me to fulfill the mission of the League of Women Voters, of an educated electorate. When a public has, when the public has a chance to see a candidate in person and listen to their response to answer questions, they very clearly know who they want to vote for. So thank you, thank Steve and your crew.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Hi, Jerry.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Jerry Ernst Schler. I'm very proud to be Vice Chair of the League of Women Voters for Oakland. And Judy, I couldn't have said that better. One of the things I do for the League is I'm in charge of all the programming, and the team is amazing. Steve responds quickly, brings experts to make us look wonderful, not only online, but then takes everything and puts it on YouTube. And we don't have an expertise right now in that arena to help us. We once did. So we are more grateful than I can tell you. And please look at YouTube and watch one of our programs, because this is from me being up handed to Steve for everything they've done for us.
Do you want to bring it up here and have Steve come up? No, I think we have a photographer, if you'd like. Jerry, Steve. Jerry, you meet in the middle?
Yeah.
Which could be a slogan for the United States, "Let's meet in the middle."
We're working on that, just in case.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. I'm the 30698 East Valentine Trail in Beverly Hills, but I am also, I am the next Director for Candidate Forums for the League of Women Voters all over the area. And I started taking these responsibilities over for Judy, and I want to reiterate what she said, that we are all about educating the voters, and without the videotape, we would not be able to educate nearly as many voters, because obviously, you know how it is with evening meetings. Not everyone can make it, but because you put it out and you have it online so that people can watch it afterward, it's very valuable. So thank you, Steve, and your fine team. I love working with them, and I deeply appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi, I'm Kent Lund, 3827 Oak Hills Drive from Oak Township. Can I have a?
Kent, rock and roll.
Oh, sorry.
Back up.
Hi, I'm Kent Lund, 3827 Oak Hills Drive in Oak Hills, Michigan. I had a collector's show on the local cable network, which I'm proud of. Twenty-five shows in the last eight years. So I presented my ideas to the club for the production company, the Hightower Guards from here about eight years ago. They approved the plan, and everything began from there. The crew I worked with often, Frank, Steve, Jose, and Carrie, continuously improved the experience and quality, and the production and editing is always perfect. It's a joy to shoot in the Township Studio. In 2024, I had the highest YouTube hits on a community television program in the country. So it was very good. It was very exciting to do that. Out of the 25 shows, I've had even some that had 1,000 hits, which is pretty good for a local guy. I've done 25 shows. I've done shows on shopping bags around the world, which were a very important thing for advertising, the beautiful illustrations. And even some of the defunct stores around Detroit and Birmingham, this woman had shopping bags from those stores. I've shot shows on Ductycloes, clothing buttons. George Washington used to make clothing buttons out of seashells and sell them on the street corner. Vintage bicycles, vintage pedal cars, vintage canes. Doctors carried canes that were hollowed that had sutures, chloroform, and stitching items to save people's lives. Promo model cars. The show I did here in the Township had 10,000 hits, so that was kind of fun. Promo cars were given out to car dealerships years ago when you went to buy a car. They likely gave a promo car to the children that were with the parents. The Fisher Body Craftsman Guild was on my show. That was a wonderful show. Automotive designers in the tech center have been on my show. Detroit was the biggest automotive advertising illustration for advertising and painted cars for illustration in the country for many, many years. I had a completely car, a local car circus that was carved in the '30s, and the man spent his entire life carving all the wagons, the people, and all the animals. That show had a lot of hits. Last week, I shot a show about a wooden canoe, wooden canvas scooters per store. So I really enjoyed shooting the shows here, the crew and everybody in that building across the street really do a great job, and I'm really happy to do it. I'm always looking for collectors if you know somebody that would like to talk about their collection, please let me know, bctvocultures@gmail.com. I haven't shot any of my collected dust yet, but I'm looking for them. So thanks. The Township's doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate it. Any further public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and move on to the second item on our agenda for Consider the Consent Agenda. I'll leave this to the board. If you want to take anything off or move forward.
I'd like to remove a few items. A-D-E-G-H-I-J. A-D-E-G-H-I-J.
Say it again, Mark.
A for Apple, D isn't dog, E isn't Edgar, G isn't George, H isn't Harry, I for ice cream, J isn't Jack.
Got it.
K isn't kite.
Okay.
And L for Larry.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll move those to the end of the, after 12, we'll move that to the very end and make those all 12.
After 11.
After 11, excuse me, after 11. We'll make those all 11, A, B, C, D accordingly. Okay, any other items? If not, I'll take a motion to move what's left.
Is there anything left?
I think B, C, F are left.
B, C, F is left, correct.
Yeah.
移到或者支持
支持所有赞成说是是否我反对破六六比零谢谢题目三我们警察局的识别由我们队长 金·詹姆斯·吉米·盖里格
是吗？ 介绍给董事会我们今晚有一个提议要发表和新加入的成员我们开始我们的提议我感觉我们刚刚做了这个但 Andy被 promoted effective earlier this month to Lieutenant. He just, he did about two years as a Sergeant almost to the day. And here we are again. As our agency, as our board knows, but as our community probably hears as well, our agency is going through a pretty intensive transition into the younger generation. I did some numbers the other day. I'm right, we lost about 518 years of service combined over the last three and a half years. So as we promote our new sergeants, our new lieutenants, their role just becomes that more important to our organization. And with that, that's why we're excited about Andy. He was a sergeant for two years. He hired on. He's been with us for about 20 years now, or just over 20 years. Andy's from the UP, open in Gahn, so his parents probably still have snow. Or he's probably shoveling it night. He went to the Mid-Michigan Police Academy. For our time here, Andy's been in just about every unit that we've had here. He's been an evidence technician, our court officer for several years. Most importantly, probably one of the most impactful positions he's held in our agencies that was before lots were combined, when he was a lots of school resource officer for five years. He became an FTO shortly thereafter. Again, another very important role in our agency. Member of our Oakland County Crimes, violent crimes and gang task force. For a couple of years, he was promoted out of that. He's a reality-based training instructor for our agency. I think Abby will tell you, his wife, that he seems to come to days for a minute and then gets bumped right back to the Mids. So I think he's done the majority of his years on Mids, and this time probably a couple of years with the promotion. We're excited for Andy to be part of this leadership team. Again, he's a very valuable resource, connects very well using his leadership style with our younger officers. So he's got his hands full here very soon as we train our new officers. So Andy, congratulations.
我是安德鲁斯
我是安德鲁斯
我支持美国的 Constitution
我支持美国的 Constitution
我支持 Michigan
我支持 Michigan
我会忠诚于我的义务
我会忠诚于我的义务
作为Lieutenant
作为Lieutenant
我的职责
我的职责
我的兄弟们我的妹妹我的小女儿我的宝贝
我的宝贝
And one question, ladies, where are we going after this tonight? Crumble cookies.
Nice.
And who's paying for that?
Chief.
Chief.
Nick Allen
我们欢迎这个年份我们在这里他花了四年时间在德克劳顿市他是从德克劳顿市迁过来的他现在正在结束他的训练他在德克劳顿市已经工作了四年他现在正在结束他的训练他在德克劳顿市已经工作了四年他是从德克劳顿市迁过来的他现在正在结束他的训练他在德克劳顿市已经工作了四年他现在正在结束他的训练他现在正在结束他的训练我们的德克劳顿市朋友已经来了因为他们看到德克劳顿市的行动但我认为他带来了那个他带来了那个他带来了那个 Nick是摩尔顿村的居民 他是2017年的学生 家里的孩子 他今年6月从克莱尔大学毕业 与领导权力相关学位 再次，他是从德克劳顿市迁过来的 他花了四年时间在97号特勤队服役 有什么其他的事情吗？ 还有第九区 如果你不知道德克劳顿市的区域，它可能是最繁忙的区域 保护他已婚两年我们在团队中雇了他 你知道，但他需要一些帮助 他有四个外孙女然后他还有一个外甥女他的妻子他有六个妻子他还有妻子所以他们有六个女性好像有很多婚礼他有很多婚礼她也很支持她也工作在德克劳顿市他有一个家族历史他有你好
那就结束了
那就结束了好谢谢主任谢谢你们为我们的社区服务我们真的很感激我们真的理解你需要面对的困难它可能是一个艰难的工作谢谢你们 我得提一下那个在角落的那个老先生，Steve Cook。Steve，你多久以来了，Steve？
三十年了
恭喜你
他在这方面非常好
我知道他从三个不同的地方都当过一个师长只是说
他喜欢移动谢谢主任
谢谢
好的，主任 题目四 我们有我们最喜欢的议员，杰瑞·杰瑞·马斯 从我们的第七 district 很高兴见到你，议员。谢谢你能来
谢谢您，主任 来到董事会 杰瑞·马斯，布隆菲尔德州县的州议员 布隆菲尔德是分成了几个州的但我很高兴代表整个州我想简单介绍一下 legislative update 肯定会听取董事会的意见上一年非常繁忙我们提出了很多公共项目包括税收 relief 我们通过了100亿美元的税 通过了100亿美元的税 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 我觉得这是今年的年度 grant 我们每年都会这么做由 supervisor McCready签署 由我们所以我再次请求你的同意
谢谢 有任何问题给主任吗？ 如果不是，举手
移除
支持所有赞成说是是否谢谢 嗯，马克
我想，它这里写着 租金是5650
对，那是正确的
我想确保我们拿到所有的钱
我们做到了我们花了更多的时间 但是我很感谢，马克 5650是这个年的租金
好的，谢谢主任 题目六我们有我们最喜欢的 senator，杰瑞·杰瑞·马斯 从我们的第七 district 很高兴见到你，议员。谢谢你能来
谢谢您，主任 来到董事会 杰瑞·马斯，布隆菲尔德州县的州议员 布隆菲尔德是分成了几个州的但我很高兴代表整个州我想简单介绍一下 legislative update 肯定会听取董事会的意见上一年非常繁忙我们提出了很多公共项目包括税收 relief 我们通过了100亿美元的税 通过了100亿美元的税 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 我们保护了生殖自由我们实施了枪权我们在民事法律上加入了 LGBTQ权益 我们增加了免费 universal meals 对所有学校学生对所有学校系统对所有学校系统这是非常重要的 然后，当然，与我们的法官 和其他投票权利 advocates 我们在 voting rights 中取得了很大的进步减少投票障碍增加投票的权限 投票者在2022年 voted on that 具体地，早上的投票 我主持 Senate Elections Committee 我们听取了我们的乡村法官如何最好实施它我认为布隆菲尔德州县在所有那段期间做得很好所以那是一个繁忙的 legislative term 这不是政治声明，但这个 legislative term的 dynamics 是不同的我在 serving 在 Democratic control 而 House 在 Republican control 所以它变得比较缓慢我们不能做出这些大革命性的改变它更 deliberative 它更 你知道，我们需要把两个不同的政治利益结合起来 但是， Senate 在我 serving 的 Democratic control 而 House 在 Republican control 所以它变得比较缓慢我们不能做出这些大革命性的改变它更 deliberative 它更 你知道，我们需要把两个不同的政治利益结合起来 但是， Senate 在 Senate 中通过了一些可能不是革命性的东西，但是重要的东西 我想谈谈 Senate 中的一些行动我们通过了 Senate 中的一些项目我们通过了 Senate 中的一些项目我们通过了 Senate 中的一些项目我们通过了 Senate 中的一些项目我们最近通过了一个关于儿童健康的问题的项目它通过了 bipartisan 支持 具体地，我们关注的是 infant mortality rate 在女性、女性、majority population 所以 Senate Bill 29 形成了一项调查 infant disparity 在儿童健康中的联邦调查我们将研究数据分析 infant disparity 在儿童健康中理解儿童健康中的 infant disparity 理解 infant disparity 在儿童健康中理解 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 infant disparity 在儿童健康中我们还通过了一个关于我们的社区 vulnerable older adults 的项目 具体地， Senate Bill 111 形成一个个人保护令保护 vulnerable adults and elders from elder abuse Senate Bill 112 包含一个 vulnerable adult 的绑架行为在定义犯罪 racketeering 的定义所以我们扩大了这个定义理解 Senate Bill 113 包含对绑架行为的惩罚 最后， Senate Bill 114 允许一个 county 或 region 创建一个 vulnerable adult 多学科团队保护 vulnerable adults 从财务 exploitation、abuse 和 lack 所以，我们关注儿童健康 我们关注 vulnerable adults 我们通过 Senate Bill 25 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 我想强调一点，我非常热爱这个 高级的然后我们可以谈谈我们在这里工作的具体事情我是一个透明主义者我们国家的政府排名 worst 我们国家的政府排名 worst 在国家内我们不排名 30th 或 40th 我们排名 50th 这就是原因我们不会根据我们的 legislators或 governor 对 records 的要求 你知道的， township 是由 FOIA 包括的你可以找到关于这里决策的决策信息但我们保护公众对 legislative 级度的这些要求你不能从 governor 或州 legislature 从中获得 FOIA 所以这就像一个黑暗的遮蔽对州 legislature 的行动和这些决策的决定我们实际上是我们中仅有的两个州不包括他们的 governor 或 legislators 对 open records 的要求 所以，我在 legislature 当中我的 supervisor 知道这一点我一直在提倡这个话题为了让更多人们了解政府为了让我们更 transparent 更诚实更道德所以这一届我在工作了十年当我 serving 在 House 的时候然后 Senate 不会接受然后我从 Senate 中拿到了我从 Senate 中拿到了我们开始了这些 bill 这些 bill 是 bipartisan 我的伙伴是 upper peninsula 的 Republican state senator 这是 Senate Bill 1和2 所以我们正在优先考虑在 Senate 期中使我们的政府更 transparent 他们通过了 Senate 他们坐在 House 我们希望在这个方面采取行动这个居民们值得我在这方面非常努力第二个我非常热爱这件事是采取价格 gouging 我们有价格 gouging 法律它有点模糊在某种程度上是无厘头的 30 省都有价格 gouging 法律包括 Michigan 每个州实际上都有一个警报在紧急情况发生时关于 businesses 可以和不能在价格定价方面进行考量 Michigan 是其中一个州没有这个警报所以如果你看加州大火加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风加州飓风我们没有飓风但我们确实有冬季风暴我们有夏季洪水但我们没有这个警报所以我在 Michigan 中尝试着加盟 30 其余的州这个警报定义了在紧急情况发生时这是限制会阻止价格 gouging 我们去年在 Senate 中拿到了这个非常遗憾 House 不允许采取行动开始 reintroduction 最后，我正在与这里的成员一起工作 And then lastly, I've been really working with members here on some township priorities. You know, Clerk Brooks and I have been working on, Brook and I have been working on dealing with protecting local ordinances on our lakes, specifically with motorized vehicles. And we can talk more about that. Clerk Brook has been on top of it. We are drafting legislation. He's made some progress with folks in Lansing and the bureaucracy. We want to protect our local ordinances. And certainly, working with our supervisor and treasurer, we've talked about some budget requests that the township has made. And I don't know if you want to talk more about that. But I've prioritized Bloomfield Township Public Safety Infrastructure and other requests that I can advocate for as we go through our state budget process. So happy to be here, happy to have another year in the legislature working with the board here, and happy to take questions.
Thank you, Senator. Glad to see you, and I appreciate those areas you're focusing in on, especially the transparency.
Yeah.
I think it's really important to let those accounts that have been hidden in the past become more public and under scrutiny. So thank you for what you're doing.
Of course.
Any questions or comments?
No, and thank you for looking out for the elderly.
Yeah.
And certainly, it's something, the abuse is rampant, as you know. And I see it financially, because I deal with elder law and probate and those issues. So it's certainly very much a need, so thank you.
Great.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Appreciate it.
Come back again, often. Come back again.
I can make one last note. We do a monthly community conversation with the Bloomfield area reps. So we, again, do it the first Monday of the month at the Bloomfield Library, which would be next Monday. So if anybody wants to come out and talk more about these issues, we're with the local area state representatives. It'll be the first Monday of the month at 5:30 at the Bloomfield Library.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Senator. Okay, item number six. Public hearing to consider approval of a lot split site plan and development amendment request concerning Unit 1 of Turtle Lake Development, 2630 Turtle Lake Drive, presented by Andrea Bibby.
Good evening.
Hi, Andrea. Welcome.
Nice to see everybody at the new dais. Looks very nice. So what I have before you this evening is a request on behalf of Turtle Lake Development. They are seeking a proposal on behalf of the property owner. Circle One Group Incorporated is requesting to amend the site plan for Turtle Lake, which also would also require an update to the development agreement for Unit 1 of Turtle Lake Farms. Highlighted on your screen shows the parcel, which is being requested this evening to be subdivided into two parcels to be noted as Units 121 and 122. The lot is highlighted there, as I stated on the screen for you. Parcel is Zoned Single Family Residential. We do have within your packet a letter dated September 4, 2024. Mark Moore of Victor International acknowledges and supports the request for two individual lots. Just like in any other instance in the township, anytime we have a request before you to split a parcel, we do have our various departments review it in relation to any necessary codes, requirements. This proposal before you, which is to subdivide this parcel, as it's highlighted on your screen, these are the two proposed lots. The resultant parcels do show buildable envelopes, which do comply with the underlying zoning of the R3 district. The two parcels, as well as the resultant building envelopes, do show the capability of meeting the minimum front side and rear yard setbacks within the R3 single-family district. In addition, they do indicate that the floodplain and wetland delineation of 25-foot buffer can also be provided and still are able to have that buildable envelope to result in two parcels equalling 20,067 square feet and 16,807 square feet is the resultant size. This was reviewed by our assessing treasurers, fire, police department, as well as environmental engineering. You do have a copy of those reports within your packet. So this evening, I'm asked of the board to take any public comment related to this request. And just want to note that the proposed lot size and configuration is compatible with adjacent parcels within the Turtle Lake Development. And I also do want to state that back in, when the township board previously approved a lot split on different parcels within Turtle Lake at Units 44 and 45, there was a condition on that lot split that the developer will have to submit a new updated floodplain, I'm sorry, stormwater management plan. That stormwater management plan, from my understanding, is forthcoming. And I just want to note that that would be a requirement as well with the conditions of this split is that that stormwater plan would have to be reviewed and approved by Hubbell, Roth, and Clark, our township engineers. So I just want to point out that that would, in fact, still be the case. And with that, we have had the language for the development agreement and the proposed amendments has been reviewed by our township attorney, finding no issues and finding it acceptable as drafted. So with that, the board is being asked to consider under what conditions or consideration you would give to the lot split being proposed in Turtle Lake. The units are laid out, and the proposed buildable envelopes can be found here on your screen.
Thank you, Andrea. So at this time, it's a public hearing. So if you're here to address the Turtle Lake development, now is your opportunity to come up to the microphone, to my right, your left, and make any comments. We ask you to keep them to three minutes. And if there's no one here to speak about public comment, we'll close public comment and open up to the Board of Trustees for any comments or questions. Anybody have any comments or questions?
No, just pleased to see that, certainly as Martin had brought up at our previous lots, that the stormwater management system is part of this, because that's certainly very important. So that's my only comments on that.
I can give you a quick update on that, too. The developer has presented us with an initial draft of the proposal, which I reviewed along with her engineers and gave them some feedback. And they're working on a revision.
Mark?
I have some questions about the setbacks at the front. Why is there a significant variation between the two? The building envelopes?
The minimum front yard setback is 40 feet. And why is it exceeding 40 feet? They're showing the required 40 feet.
In both or in one?
I don't have a particular reason why it's larger than 40 feet. I'm just demonstrating that they do meet the minimum 40-foot setback.
So where does that number appear, on the bottom one? For the 40-foot setback?
There's a table.
It should be on the drawing.
I didn't notice a marker for it.
It's indicated as a 40-foot setback here. So they're indicating that line is at 40 feet.
Yes, it is to the right, Mark.
And the other setback is at 2982?
Yes.
What's the other setback, the side yard? Turtle Lake does have their own setbacks in some properties. Each parcel does have sometimes different setbacks and what's required by the township. So in this instance, the side yard setback does exceed the required 16-foot.
And that's in the deed.
The 20-foot side yards, and that's part of the PUD agreement.
I'd prefer to see a measurement on there, and it's not just a line item statement.
Understood. I have the survey that's being presented. If there's further clarification that needs to be made, we can certainly address that. What I have before you is the...
That's the deed from the property, obviously.
But they do meet the required setbacks, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, this is just for the salam of the split. It would still have to go through our building and our engineer upon a property being proposed to you guys.
Correct.
Which would then have to meet all of our township ordinances and zoning.
Correct.
And go through another round of due diligence. And in that case, our experts and our engineer will be looking at it.
Correct.
Right now, we're just being told or shown there is this big enough buildable footprint, which it meets that, and the setbacks meet our minimums.
Correct.
But there's no dimension highlighting that for the setbacks. I can't look at the drawing and see what's happening. Just a statement, whether or not that's true or not, I can't look at the measurements and...
And that's a fair point, but this engineer, who's putting his license on the line and all of his liability is saying it meets it. So he's the one who's responsible if it doesn't meet it.
And he stamped it.
So I'm not a civil engineer to be able to argue with him. So I have to go based on his word. I understand you like to do your due diligence. I understand that, but I can't go against this gentleman's word.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
Ready to make a motion that the lot split for Turtle Lake, Unit 1, be approved contingent on the, certainly, the stormwater management system that be reviewed and approved by Hubbell, Roth, and Clark, and the additional requirements for the department reviews, and make it into lots 121 and 122.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, five to one. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Item number seven. Introduction of Proposed Ordinance Number 695 and Amendment to the Small Cell Wireless Communication Facility Ordinance. Alana Knox, our township attorney, welcome, Alana, our township attorney.
Good evening, members of the township board. I'm here before you to present a proposed amendment to ordinance number 688, which was adopted by the township in 2021. This is for the Small Cell Wireless Communication Facilities ordinance that the township has. There are a couple of changes that are proposed in this introduction. I'd like to go through them, since there are so few of them. As background, myself, Sean from the Clerk's Office, as well as Mr. Brook, Mr. Schostak, and Supervisor McCready met on this ordinance to try and make some changes that would help streamline our process. Since implementing this ordinance in 2021, we now have the experience to know that our process can be a little bit more streamlined for the companies that want to come in here. So, starting on page three, and this is probably one of the most important changes. We are amend, the proposal is to allow 45-foot poles in residentially-zoned areas and 50-foot poles in commercially-zoned areas. The reason for this change is to, essentially, the feedback that we're getting from the small cell wireless companies is that taller poles allow them to use less poles. So it's sort of a balancing act between whether you want taller poles or you want more poles in the right-of-way. So we're seeing a lot of applications that are coming in over 40 feet. So we feel comfortable that this is a kind of a change that will allow these companies to implement small cell wireless facilities while minimizing crowding of poles and right-of-ways. Moving on to page eight of your packet. We made some changes. This is a list of sort of the items that we require from small cell wireless companies. Now, the way that this works is that companies like DTE or AT&amp;T will own the actual pole, and then they will subcontract to small cell wireless facilities. And there will be a contractual relationship between those parties who actually own the small cell wireless facility and the equipment that will go on that pole. So we went through this list and removed some items that either our engineering department didn't feel were necessary, that we got feedback from planning that weren't really necessary or weren't being reviewed, or there wasn't the requisite experience within our departments with small cell wireless to actually know what we were looking at when we got these items. So the goal of these removals is not to lower our standards, but to narrow in on the items that are actually important to the township, that the township can review, and that we really have the experience to know what we're looking at. Next, and I can answer questions on specifics on that, of course. Next is on page nine. This was a change to our pre-meeting requirement. So we have some repeat customers. So we require a pre-meeting with new small cell wireless companies that come into the township. And since we have so many repeat customers, that means small cell wireless companies that want to come back to the township, install more, do more work in the township. Requiring them to meet again with the small cell wireless committee was kind of a burdensome thing on their schedule. They already, the purpose of that meeting is to know what the township, what our process is, what we require, the expectations. And once that's established with the company, we felt that that was something that really only needed to happen one time. And lastly, on page 16, this is sort of a repeat. Again, it talks about the maximum pole height in residential and commercial areas and raising that up, and then giving the township board the authority to waive that requirement. Obviously, they would have to request that before the township board. That's something that currently exists in the ordinance. We're just raising those heights. And I'm happy to take questions from members of the board.
Thank you, Alana. And the reason we're doing this is because our cell service here is not too good, right?
Correct.
And we're trying to make it easier for these companies to come in and set up their equipment so that we can help improve the service.
Absolutely.
Right, so thank you for your work on this. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yes, so I appreciate you guys doing this, trying to find ways to remove barriers or find ways to provide better infrastructure. Something that we talked about in the strategic plan, talk about what we hear with our residents, about cellphone service being a problem. But again, we don't want big cellphone towers in our backyard. This is a great solution to be using current infrastructure that is not intrusive to our neighbors. This is a great thing. I'm glad we're doing this. I'm glad we're removing barriers for companies to be able to come in and do this. We already have a few in the township. We need a lot more. I literally just met up with a couple of residents, and they asked me, what can we do? So I'm glad that this is something on the agenda, and we can get this across the finish line. So thank you guys very much for your hard work on it.
Can you be a little bit more specific on the equipment going on the poles that...
Sure.
You guys were, you still have concerns or don't understand or...
No, so I, and this might be my inelegant phrasing, but I'll give you some examples. And I believe you're referencing the removal of certain requirements on page eight. So I'll be happy to go through those with you. So, for example, we removed item nine specifically because the size, the township cannot control the size of the small cell wireless facility, the thing that is going on the pole.
The size of the equipment?
Correct. It's a standardized size. There's not really feedback that the township could give that would change that. It's sort of industry standard across the board. So that particular requirement wasn't practically necessary. On item...
Before moving on, can I add a quick little note?
Absolutely.
When this was initially drafted, we didn't really, we weren't aware of what the size would be. We were looking at putting in every kind of question that we could challenge. And as we've worked on this, and from my office, Sean Mueller is the prime person handles it, who's also here, we've learned of the standard sizing. And asking them to provide information that's just, at this point, duplicative and irrelevant is bureaucratic nonsense, and so we're proposing to take it out.
Yeah.
And about the boxes are, from a sailing impact and wind loading, how many units can actually fit on one of our towers?
So that actually goes to the pole loading analysis. So actually, DTE and AT&amp;T conduct internal pole loading analysis. They know how much their pole can support. And they do not provide that analysis to their subcontractors. So we could get that directly from DTE and AT&amp;T, but requiring small cell wireless contractors to try and get that from DTE and AT&amp;T and then provide it to us was something they were very much struggling to do. It added a lot of time to the application process and really prevented these projects from moving forward. They do, however, DTE and AT&amp;T, who own the poles, do conduct that analysis internally.
And do we, when we do get a request and they send the report, does it include the details that, you know, AT&amp;T or DTE accept on this pole, et cetera?
Correct, yes. The next item is this, it's an acronym. It's ANSI/TIA 222G2 Standards. This is essentially a document. You can find it online. It's industry standards that we're referencing. We inherit, this is, again, what Mr. Brook mentioned. One of the items we're kind of putting out there, you have to demonstrate that you're meeting industry standards. This is sort of something that it's hard to implement. They are demonstrating industry standards with their application. They're using normative equipment. This item is not something that is needed, quite frankly, and not something. We're not experts in these standards beyond the applications that we get. There's no, you know, small cell wireless expert who works in the township. However, we do have engineers who are comfortable evaluating the poles, looking at, you know, work requirements, understanding where our utilities are under these poles in our right-of-ways, and that's the sort of thing that we're focusing on. So that's why we're removing that one.
And is, they submit that with their application, the details, those certifications?
Right, so they are inherently, the facilities that they are implementing are standardized. And we're not, this is like an extra layer that's, one, hard to demonstrate, and, two, even if they sent us something, we wouldn't necessarily be able to analyze that internally because that's not what our engineers are really focused on. They're focused on work site, utility location, where the pole is going, distances. That's what our team can analyze.
Can I add a quick point on that? Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that what, this is all, these are manufacturing standards associated with the production of the equipment?
Right.
Which is handled at the manufacturing level?
But there should be, like a UL certificate, even on our computers, we have a UL number where it's tested and verified. Is that included in the specification?
These specific standards are not, if you look at the one above it, the Certificate of Compliance with FCC Radio Frequency Emission Regulations, as well as, I believe there's another certification that they're required to submit as well, cover...
Should they submit a document saying they meet ABCD from a third-party-approved source?
Well, they have a, they are in a contractual relationship with DTE and AT&amp;T, who own the poles, and they are utilizing equipment that is standard in the industry. So to that extent, yes.
Any other questions or comments for Alana? Any other questions or comments for Lana? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight. Consider approval of Werner Estates Water Main Project contract to work presented by Corey Almas. Welcome, Corey.
Hey, good evening, board. Got a quick presentation for you here. New setup here. Got to get used to this. Okay. So this is for the 2025 Werner Estates Water Main Project. Quick history here. The Werner Estates Water Main Project was a key component in the township's long-term capital improvement plan. The project was prioritized when there was an expression of interest for the Werner Estates Road S A D. So what we did was we bumped this project up a few years because the last thing that we want to do is dig up and excavate for water main on a brand-new road that's been paid by our residents. So recognizing the opportunity to coordinate the infrastructure improvements and minimize disruption to the residents, the township accelerated the plan for the water main replacement to coincide with the roadwork. And this approach ensures that critical infrastructure systems, roads and water are addressed efficiently and cost-effectively. Due to the size and cost of the water main replacement project, the township has adopted a, in phased, the in-phased approach to implementation. The project will be carried out in two phases, spread over a couple of fiscal years to help manage expenses and reduce the risk of exceeding allocated budget. So in this slide here, you'll see, and the pink shaded area is phase two. The white area is phase one. The contractor will likely begin late summer and work through late fall and then begin early April of 2026 with anticipated completion by late June, I believe it is, Chris? Chris Ross from Hubble Rothen Clark is here with me if you have any technical questions about the project. This project is going to be the pre-chlorinated pipe bursting to expedite construction. There's minimal surface disruption, approximately three hundred feet to five hundred feet pipe replacement per day. Residents adjacent to the day's work are, will be without water for about eight to twelve hours, reconnected that same day. Minimal additional water shut-offs for the entire operating system. So staff's recommendation is to move to approve the bid and award the contract for the Werner Estates Water Main Replacement Project to Bidagere Contractors, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $3,423,369 with the following provisions. The Township Engineering Financial Services Department shall have the opportunity to approve up to a ten percent increase to the contract amount based on actual quantities needed to complete the project or conditions discovered in the field, provided such conditions and or quantities are confirmed by both the township and the township consulting engineers. Should the project conditions or required quantities result in a contract increase above ten percent but less than fifteen percent, ESD shall obtain the approval from the township supervisor prior to issuing such approval. And lastly, if the contract cost is projected to increase by fifteen percent or more, ESD shall obtain approval from the Board of Trustees prior to issuing any further approval. Bidagere has worked in the township. We have familiarity with them. They are capable and qualified to do this, do this work.
Thank you, Corey.
Entertain any questions?
No, it's just, certainly it's logical to put the sewer replacement, the pipe replacement before you do the road, so.
Water main, water main.
Water main.
Not sewer, water main, yes.
Certainly, it makes a lot of sense to do it that way. I'm glad you're doing that. My only question really is, so once you get into it and it gets started, how will the homeowners be notified when they, they'll be without water for that particular-
Yeah, very good question. And with these water main projects or any infrastructure projects, we do, I think, an admirable job of pre-notifying them of the work that's, that's going to be coming, well, in advance. We've done that with South Bloomfield Highlands. We've held, if when necessary, public information meetings. We've worked very closely with the HOA there. So whether it's on a, on a website, social medias, we keep the residents very well informed. HRC, our observers on, in the field, along with our asset management coordinator and our project coordinators are out there on a daily basis, communicating with the residents, and they've got face-to-face contact as well.
Right. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I just, I want, similar things from trustee Barnett about this is a smart thing to do. Do the infrastructure underground before you do the additional infrastructure on the surface when we do the roads. This is a smart way to do it. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention so we can get this ahead. And then again, the estimate came in really well. So compared to what we were estimating from HRC, which was four point one million with another almost million dollars in contingencies and fees, we're down to this bid of being about three point four million.
Correct.
So that's good fiscal responsibility of doing multiple bids and going with a good trusted contractor. So thank you for that. This is great.
How often has Bidagere requested additional funds?
Additional funds?
Well, we're allotting authority to approve increases, increases up to ten to fifteen percent without seeking board approval.
Yeah, to give you, the Bidagere last worked in the township on our PRV projects. It's a water main pressure-reducing valve we replaced recently, three locations, I believe it was.
How often do they ask for more money?
I, I can't give you a number, Mark, on how many times, how many times, if you're, if you're asking me, are they, do they make a habit of coming after the township for extra compensation for additional work or extras on the project? I don't know the answer to that, to give you an exact number. I can, what I can tell you is that in many cases, on several projects, there are unforeseen, and there's issues that arise that neither our ESD or our consulting engineers can foresee. We don't have X-ray vision underground. We're doing underground work. So we put these contingencies in, in play to just basically say that, yes, absolutely, it is our intention and motivation to have a project come in at or under budget and on time. Generally speaking, with a pipe bursting or a pre-chlorinated pipe bursting project, you're, the pipe is already there, so there's less excavation and room for the unforeseen's. But they still happen. My experience with Bidagere was, I'm going off of memory here, but I don't know that there are that many exorbitant extras that were requested as part of the PRV project. There were a couple minor, just based on the initial observation and findings of the, of the vaults that needed, like, different electrical work, some minor stuff. Just ancillary stuff that wasn't accounted for in the project and discovered during the process. So I, I don't know how to answer that beyond that, but it's an occurrence in, in the, in the industry.
And in automation, I see it all the time. And a lot of the times, our customers don't want to pay the extra amount. And they hold firm. So I don't think I would want to do that, especially if it's something that is unforeseen. But I do think the amount that we're allowing at ten percent and fifteen percent are excessive.
Can I add something here? So the, the question's kind of a little reversed because this is a unit pricing quote.
Correct.
The units are based, are defined in advance by our consulting engineers, not Brigadier.
Correct.
Right? And our consulting engineers, as you said, don't have X-ray vision. They don't actually know how many units will be needed. And, and, and if work is then being done, and our consulting engineers agree that, that, that their, essentially, their estimate was low, we can then be, we're allowed, going up to ten percent in order to reflect actual work performed. The quote, can't necessarily do that in advance to reflect actual work performed because, again, we don't know what's underground.
Correct.
Our engineers on our behalf have made the best estimate. So if there's an increase, it's, it's because of the unknown unpredictables-
Yeah.
-in the work of our engineer, not because of the work of Brigadier.
Yeah.
And I'm not blaming any blame, but just wanted to make sure we get the right direction.
I'm fine with all of that. I just think that we don't track projects online to see what's happening and changes and what's being approved. Our residents can't go online and see that and approve it. And without that transparency, the only way we can do it is in a board meeting. That's why I think the ten to fifteen percent is, is excessive. If we could go in online and see what was happening on project-by-project basis, I would be more lenient because members of the community could go in and check.
Sure.
And since this project is being charged to the residents, correct?
No.
No, no. This is, this is an existing water main that's been replaced at the township.
Is being replaced. So even for water and sewer, this impacts our annual rates.
Correct.
So if we don't collect enough revenue, then our fund balances go down. And it's important to see what's happening on the projects and understand. And when we don't have that clarity, we don't have monthly reports with fund balances, we don't have quarterly reports with fund balances.
Okay.
And all of that is approved by the board. And so what's the mechanism to have transparency and to know what's actually happening on the project? So, and that mechanism doesn't exist.
Chris?
Yeah, so one thing, I actually think this is a great thing for us to have that ten percent in there because somebody who does construction, there are things that come up in the field. It costs us more money to get those contractors out there again if you come to us and say it was a twenty thousand up charge or thirty thousand dollars to do something that's good in the field and the best for the residents. We know we have experts out there. Hubble Rothen Clark has been our consultant for sixty years. They're invested in our community and so are employees. So having them to have the economy to do the ten percent-
Yeah.
-is, I think, a smart thing, and it saves the township money long-term. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Yeah, and to add to that, Chris, the moment that we, in our, in our construction projects and whatever infrastructure it might be, whether sidewalk, road, water main, sanitary sewer, the moment I have to stop and wait and get an answer, and I'm, and I'm holding up the project, it's costing more money. The contractor's equipment's on-site, his personnel on-site. Every moment that I delay an answer or response on how to address a conflict in the field, now, a minor ten percent, and I'm not going to say, you know, it's, it's, there are minor conflicts, but that doesn't add up to a ten, a multiple ten percent. Generally speaking, a conflict of a ten percent range is pretty significant. Okay, especially on this. But note that Bidagere's unit price is eight hundred thousand dollars less than the second bidder. So there's a pretty sizable and substantial, and they've been very aggressive in wanting to work within the township. And, and they're, they're pretty darn good at what they're doing, so.
Thank you, Corey. Any other questions?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
That we approved the Werner Estates Water Main Project and awarded to the contract to Bidagere.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. My no vote, let the record reflect, is related to the overage amounts. I believe those are excessive.
Yeah, you don't need to explain. We'll just take the no vote. Item number nine. Consider approval of the 2026 Janor and Selly Safety Path Proposed Route, Corton Road, presented by Corey Almas. You're back.
Yeah. Okay, so this is regarding the Janor and Selly Safety Path, specific to the Corton Road from Cranbrook to Chesterfield. So just a quick history on this path. About a year ago, we held an open house for another path, and one of the residents there was requesting that east-west connector from Woodward to Telegraph- with, through Birmingham, and that's kind of our, was our challenge there. So I had run into, at a, at a meeting, the Birmingham city engineer and mentioned to her that, that we ought to get together, sit down, and consider something if there's an option for that. And they had. They, they kind of pulled their, their city, and we'd gotten together again and, and said, okay, this is getting momentum. So then we brought the master plan revision to the Board of Trustees, and we added Corton Road last year in the 2024 master plan update. So it's supported, this idea, this concept is supported by the city of Birmingham. Bloomfield Township would install fourteen hundred feet from, on Corton, the south side of Corton Road from Cranbrook to Chesterfield. And Birmingham would construct from Pilgrim to Woodward, providing continuous safety path along the south side of Corton. Bloomfield Township's portion is estimated, estimated cost about six hundred sixty-one thousand, which includes a five percent inflation, inflationary factor. Again, you can see the circled area there. That's the Bloomfield Township piece. In the blank area, just to the right of that, is the city of Birmingham's piece that they would be responsible for. Again, this is just showing a closer view of the township's fourteen hundred feet of safety path that would, we would need to solve. The benefit in working with the city of Birmingham on this is that their consulting engineers are HRC as well. We can do this under one project, bid it as one project. But this is just for the design of the safety path in which the township would only be responsible for the design of our piece there. Birmingham would be responsible for theirs. So be one construction project, but accommodating two cities and essentially the masses. Couple photos here where the existing sidewalk or safety path terminates at the east side of Cranbrook. There is just basically open parcel there. We'll have some engineering to do there. You can see in the dish line, so. And then where it's going to pick up at the beginning of Birmingham's safety path, just west of Chesterfield. So our recommendation is that the board approve the suggested safety path route for the 2026 Safety Path Program. That would be constructed likely next year, designed this year, and construction next year, and then authorize ESD to proceed with the design of the route in 2025 with bidding and construction of the safety path take base in '26 for a planned cost of six hundred sixty-one thousand.
Thank you, Corey. Any questions for Corey on the safety path?
No, other than I appreciate when you brought it to the board previously, just for consideration. And it certainly is something that's very positive for bringing both Bloomfield Township and Birmingham together in this area where, which is, I think, going to benefit both of us. So thank you. Certainly in support.
So would you like to make a motion on that?
I'd be happy.
I do have-
Mark, go ahead.
Of course.
Yes. The six hundred sixty-one thousand, what's the expected split between the design phase, those expenses this year?
No, the six sixty-one is, that's just the township's portion of the estimated cost of construction.
And so that does not include- The design portion?
The design, I think it was in the, in the packet of what the design, actual design cost.
Do we need to approve that ten million as well?
Not for, no, not for design engineering. That's, that's-
That's an expense that we should be approving, so should we put that in the motion as well?
Well, it says six sixty-one includes contingency, design, construction, engineering, with a five percent project inflation, inflationary factor. It's all into that price.
Was it in the packet?
Yeah, it's on page, well, it's on your first page in your-
Including a hundred and seven thousand dollars in design and construction.
There it is. Yep.
So it's all included in the six sixty-one?
So do we know the split between the two years or the expected split on expense?
This is just our portion, right?
Yes.
Right, because we're constructing fourteen hundred feet. We've designed, and they're going to do- Are they going to connect to that and do the other side?
They're, so on the engineer's opinion of probable cost in the, in the packet-
Right.
On the, it shows that the cost of construction is four twenty-six. The, the design and construction engineering is one oh seven.
With contingencies at one oh seven?
Yep.
And inflationary factor at twenty-one thousand?
Right.
Okay. It's on, it's in the, it's- It, it's on, it's in the, it's in the agenda packet, Mark.
So engineering is one oh-seven.
Yeah, so that'll go this year, this financial year.
Yes, yes, correct.
So we're expecting uh, two fourteen this year and four twenty-six next?
No, the design. The design costs are just one oh-seven. So it, next year it'll be, it would be uh, four twenty-six. With one oh-seven in contingencies, but that's, that's just.
If they need it.
If they need it. Um, and then plus the one, uh, twenty-one thousand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, did you make a motion there?
Happy to.
Neil?
Um, yeah, we approved the two hundred, two thousand twenty-six Janor and Sully Safety Path uh, proposed road, route on Corton Road as presented.
Support?
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. Thank you, Corey. Item number ten, Anna Report of Bloomfield Township Cable Department, presented by Carrie Lazat, Director of Cable Community Relations. Welcome, Carrie.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Um, let's begin with our township hall renovations. Uh, this is what it looked like before and here we are in the after. Uh, we really want to thank, you know, this was, thank everybody that participated in making this happen. It was truly a team effort. Um, a lot of these times, these, these ideas that seem pretty simple are a big idea that take a lot of um, cooperation. We want to thank the building maintenance crew, Dean, Bill, Jerry and Kevin for all their help during the construction process with requests to move and donate old furniture and the I T team, Will, Tim, Dave and Brandon for their help with any network and hookup at questions. There were many questions along the way. Uh, special thanks to our star of the evening, I guess it's Steve Rota again. He ran him back and forth, he I think almost wore a path between here and the cable building, uh, trying to manage all of the vendor requests and um, the multiple things that came up, even until today, he was setting up these chairs. So uh, thank, thanks to everybody. As a reminder, uh, the board approved the three hundred thirty thousand dollar project in September of last year. Uh, Lind Howe Associates were paid about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to complete the resurfacing, painting and new chairs and advanced lighting and sound, it was about a hundred and seventy-one thousand. Um, they updated the technology, including new cameras, lighting, audio and importantly, a new switcher and supporting equipment that is located over in the cable building. These renovations were paid with PEG funding that is earmarked for cable-related capital expenses. And I'm beginning with my budget. This is the first time I've shown you my budget during an annual report, um, it's my third annual report, so I'm starting to get the hang of it. Uh, if we look at the open finance page that's on the website, that's where I kind of took the pie chart from and you'll find commute cable under community enrichment. Um, as you would expect, our salaries and wages are the biggest piece of the pie at forty-four percent and about a third of that is our part-time staff. Um, in twenty twenty-four, the part-time staff had a budget of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and I did really want another full-time head added to my department because historically cable had had um, five full-time employees and they were divided, they were all dedicated to cable and then community relations was kind of a, became a, the, the side that was more focused on government communications and then uh, they took a full-time person that was on the cable side of operations and made a grant and engagement position, which we do really need and has proven uh, to be a good decision, just we lost a person on the cable side. So I didn't get the full-time head, but I did get an increase of um, forty thousand plus dollars, so my twenty twenty-five part-time budget was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So what we were able to do with that was create the show Living in Bloomfield, which is a quarterly news magazine that uses video to tell the stories of our community and those quarterly uh, thirty-minute shows are broken up into about thirty shorter segments from two to three minutes that we intersperse on social media and all the other platforms that we distribute on. So I think it's a really a wonderful, modern way, the way that we should be communicating with video to um, show all that's awesome and wonderful about our community. Uh, professional services includes and community promotion and computer services, so that's what's over in there. And capital outlay, that would obviously be uh, the PEG spending in the township hall and related upgrades. So my total budget is a hundred, one million point, one point six-six million. On the revenue side, um, I just want to remind you, well, and for those that maybe don't know, that we're a little different than other departments on campus and that we are self-funded primarily by PEG and franchise fees. PEG fees are only for capital related, for cable-related capital expenses and franchise fees are for anything here in the township and we use them primarily to pay for the salary, salaries in our community and community relations. So everything else that's not uh, the capital expenses within our department, that's where the franchise fees go for. Um, the B A C B contract, that is another good chunk of our budget and those are the franchise fees from our four partner communities that make up the Birmingham area cable board. That contract is uh, three hundred eight thousand dollars and it's a five-year contract that is set to renew next year, so we'll be renegotiating that. Uh, this tiny slim piece of the pie, that's one point six percent, is our earned revenue. So B A C B contract, that is still kind of earned revenue, but we don't account for it that way. Um, but the earned revenue is other additional work that we do work for hire. In twenty twenty-three, it was fifteen hundred dollars, that was the year I started. In twenty twenty-four, it was eleven thousand dollars and in twenty twenty-five, I won't make you guess, it was twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. So we were able to increase that, you know, more, more than double it and I hope to continue that trend. Also, um, I'm looking, I wanted to create a different kind of pie too, that included uh, our grant contribution to the township. So that would increase my revenue that we bring in to two point one million. We received five hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars in grants and this is compared to the prior year, which was a hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars, which we were awarded in twenty twenty-three. So what does that look like? Uh, the police and I C V and fire breathing protective equipment were both a part of the appropriations process via step, uh, Representative Samantha Stuckoff totaling three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the senior services companion cafe was awarded via Exhale and the senior services friendship club was awarded via the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan. Uh, fire personnel and house screenings were awarded via assistant to firefighters grants, that's one I think that repeats without too much effort. Um, the animal welfare received three thousand dollars for spade, spading, speding, neutering. And our department, community relations, we received thirteen hundred fifty dollars for equipment that was used during the open house. So the majority of these grants, um, while we work for them and write for them in the cable and community relations department, they go to help fund other things throughout the township. Um, I did want to also mention um, the decreasing revenue, uh, that's, that everyone is seeing um, across all, you know, across the country really. Um, these decreasing cable fees um, are generated by cable, but they're not spent just in cable, so I just wanted to um, talk a little bit about this as we've been talking about it in cable for quite a while, but it's really surfacing now throughout um, other areas of townships and cities. This document was initiated by the treasurer in Madison Heights, Linda uh, Kunaath, who initiated and sent this around asking for other municipalities their revenue numbers because as you can see, their fees dropped by thirty-eight percent over the last five years. Now, if you look up here and you see our, our revenue has only dropped seven percent and that's just because our competition hasn't been as robust and Comcast has been the available provider, so people have stopped subscribing to cable and are just subscribing to streaming. But as we um, see Metronet is coming in and they'll start doing construction this summer, we also need to be aware that we will be seeing decreased revenue, possibly as much as Madison Heights because of the switch from cable to streaming and I will talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. But that's because of the way the funding is um, charged to the, to the customer essentially for operating within the rights of way. So here we are with uh, most of the cost for what we pay for, this fabulous team who works very hard, all the time, um, twenty-four, seven, as in uh, they come in, stay late, work weekends and holidays. Uh, Steve manages most of our part-time staff and Greg manages the Living in Bloomfield team and production and Greg and Amy report to Greg. Jose and Amy report to Greg. Greg reports to Greg too, I suppose, but no. Um, our part-time staff, um, we have twenty-one current employees and um, there was an upcoming lecture that we're doing hosted by Guy Gordon, uh, with the author of The Grand Bargain. We're doing that over in Bloomfield Hills and Steve said, I hope you're ready to operate camera carry because we're really busy. So all of these people, uh, they're, it's, you know, they couldn't be really replaced by one full-time person because they're all working in multiple positions in other, in all of our six communities, all at the same time on occasion. Uh, we also like to mention those who have moved on to full-time positions after starting with us as of either an intern or their first uh, job in the industry and so these two have found full-time employment elsewhere and we are happy for them and we celebrate that. Just a reminder of who our PEG communities are with Bloomfield Township at the top, Birmingham, Beverly Hills, Bloomfield Hills, Franklin Village and Bingham Farms. Uh, the types of programming that we produce, public programming is the P, government meetings are the G and partner programming is still the P. Uh, the E stands for education and that is managed by uh, the schools. Uh, I was also given a total that we do thirty-nine total boards in providing public transparency, governmental transparency by recording and broadcasting those meetings and making them available. Here's the list of meetings and um, now I'm going to quickly just fly through these types of public programming that we offer. Uh, we have a fun video at the end, but this gives you an idea this, of the kind of production that we're producing uh, year-round here in the township. We had four new producers this year, uh, community producers, they helped tell the stories of our community as volunteers and we provide the technical support to make it easy and turnkey for them. These are all the digital channels that we manage. So uh, really when I started, I'll almost, I'll be celebrating my almost three-year anniversary, my three-year anniversary coming up soon and um, we have probably, and we added a lot of these since I've been here, uh, probably the most significant being YouTube. Um, but also you can download these on Spotify and listen to podcasts and it's, uh, watch it on your cable cast, you can watch it at home on your smart TV, so these are all the ways that you can find us out there in addition to YouTube. You want to be able to watch us on cable as well. Our digital newsletters, the Township Vinos goes out to forty-five hundred subscribers weekly and then we offer three others, uh, one in, uh, one internal, which is the employee newsletter and the other two for external audiences, specific for cable and uh, those interested in becoming a police officer are knowing more about what's going on in the police department to support the recruitment there. Uh, we redesigned the newsletter last year and it was so long ago now because we launched it in, um, well, March of last year, fourth quarter and I think it took a little while for people to get used to the new design, but this magazine style really looks nice and we're very pleased with it. Public relations, we sent out a total of thirty-seven press releases and almost half of those were picked up with um, follow-up articles. We did special print projects, this was an election year, so uh, the one on the left is for the election. We did storm sewer brochure, a storm sewer brochure and a public safety bookmark and senior services. Some of our most watched content, now this is YouTube, which provides uh, some statistics, which are really, are some data for us, it's very, always very interesting to take a look at. Um, our guests tonight, the League of Women Voters, those are seven candidate forums, so we can see that they had almost ten thousand views during their time on YouTube. That doesn't um, account for when they're watched on our cable channel, but it does demonstrate that people are really interested in that kind of information and um, we see a lot of those hits because they are also taking those videos and uh, putting them on their own website, so when people are seeking out that information, they're going to their website, not our website, but because it's our video, that's why we're seeing those uh, hits there. Uh, B A C B sports, those seven games, those are the um, the rival teams in Birmingham, so that's Broves versus Seehum and um, I think we cover twenty-five different events and things for, as part of that contract and I'm hoping to expand on that. Kent Lund talked a lot about his show, so I won't go into that any longer, but this was, those were forty-seven hundred hits were just for last year alone and he's accumulated many more over his collector's show. Um, the meeting following, trustee Fekes' comment, which is up in the uh, right side there, um, was about six hundred percent higher than average in views for a public meeting than anything else and when something happens in the community that garners a lot of attention, we're able to bring that meeting to anyone. Uh, governmental transparency at its finest when demand to attend was so high, not everybody could be immediately accommodated, so um, we were able to show them with the meeting broadcast live. Uh, we did our heart of community, heart of the community awards last year, this was our first year of doing that. Um, we recognize Steve Rota for his twenty-five years plus of service and um, Maggie Barclay had, was retiring and she was an excellent partner producing work for the senior center. The Bloomfield Township Public Library was also recognized as a community partner and Dr. Prasad. And I do, I have to read you a quick email that I received, um, that was related to Maggie, we just got this recently, so it's these kind of, you know, emails that we live for. Uh, you may need to know what an important part of my week it is to be able to turn, to be able to channel Maggie's energy at one P M. every afternoon. So I cheat a bit, she's doing the exercising, exercise videos. So I cheat a bit and I don't do every little thing, but her virtual encouragement and visual demonstrations keep my seventy-seven-year-old bones moving. Never ever consider replacing those videos or the memory of magical Maggie. Need to make sure that you know that this is one senior service that is valued more than the most sophisticated equipment in the center. I'm also a regular participant in Zoom, Zumba on Mondays and Mary Ann Pace is the best. Thanks and with great gratitude, Susan Brody. So it's, you know, bringing it, bring the work home and uh, those, those stories are so awesome, really love to share them. Uh, community events, so we continued our food trucks, our open houses and our studio orientations and we added a week-long youth documentary workshop in conjunction with the Regional Youth Academy hosted by the Bloomfield Township Police Department. A digital literacy day, we called Back to School with B C T V where we brought people into the studio and recorded um, events, our encoded, recorded some digital literacy and that was very well received and we've using, you're using our studio to host a variety of meetings such as homeowner associations and other meetings that we're also attending more in person. We've extended partnerships with the Birmingham area art center, the library, uh, the schools and our app had fifteen hundred registered users last year and if you're watching right now, you can scan that Q R code. You can see from the numbers on the, around the app there which buttons were most, people were most interested in. We've done this at a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars a month, um, eighteen hundred dollars for twenty twenty-four, so I think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck with the use of this app. Our most popular feature is the click and report, residents and H O A presidents are enjoying the ability to report issues with pictures and our video quick, directly to the correct department for a quick response and we get messages like trip hazard north of the driveway and shipping container being used at a garage. So that's proven to be very helpful in uh, reducing the amount of emails we need and getting responses quickly for residents. Uh, we kind of did, we did a branding audit and created a guide, so that's important for our image as we bring everything together as outlined in the strategic plan as well as for A D A compliance and uh, so we have this guide available now. What could possibly be next? It's our fortieth anniversary here at B C T V and so we celebrate that this year and in the fall, the weekend before Thanksgiving, we'll be doing a very short, sweet film festival hosted by us and you'll see more studio updates in our building and the public spaces. The strategic plan, uh, our. So that's important for our image as we bring everything together as outlined in the strategic plan as well as for ADA compliance. And so we have this guide available now. What could possibly be next? It's our 40th anniversary here at BCTV. And so we celebrate that this year. And in the fall, the weekend before Thanksgiving, we'll be doing a very short, sweet film festival hosted by us. And you'll see more studio updates in our building and the public spaces. The strategic plan, our department is tasked with new community and cultural events, calendar events and develop and promote our brand identity. So we'll be working on those things. Most importantly is reaching this ADA target completion date of April 26, 2027. We've been immersed for several months already in understanding the digital accessibility legislation and learning how it affects the township. We're tasked with ensuring our digital content, website, app, newsletters, videos and social media is accessible to people with disabilities. Currently, we're in phase one. We have determined the successful criteria and begun implementing specific changes in the way we communicate in order to meet the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, or WCAG, pronounced WICAG, thanks for burying me, put forth by the Worldwide Web Consortium. The branding audit we did recently, which resulted in more descriptive guidelines were part of this initiative. However, many of these changes will go unnoticed unless you are using some sort of assistive technology such as a screen reader. Nevertheless, it is an important but time-consuming part of our everyday work now. In phase two, in a few months, we'll begin working with each department to evaluate and update their content and this will require some training. Phase three, implementation of new guidelines for each department will take place. Content that can't be made accessible and will need to be archived or removed from their website. Training, support and testing will keep everyone on track. This legislation requires that we comply by April 2027, which seems like a long way off, but cannot be achieved without strategic planning and cooperation from the entire organization. Since our sports has been performing so well, this is what I'm looking at developing more sports content because the community loves it. It does well in communities across the country and I believe that we should be doing more here. So we're offering a new kind of summer camp this weekend. We already have interest and we haven't even really publicized it yet. We are charging for this camp, which is the first time we've done something like this, but to manage some of our expenses, it'll be $200 for our member communities, the six communities that are part of our different agreements, and $250 for any spots that we have for anyone outside those communities. And as we look at doing additional work for hire, this is another area that we're looking at expanding in and trying to develop some of this business. So we'll be looking for local partners to underwrite those kind of productions. Our bicentennial is right around the corner. Significant planning to prepare for the 200th anniversary of the township, including a rebrand, which this is all happening in 2027, so just a short time away. And if you look in this picture here, this is just one little thing that we pulled from the archives that I guess it's Supervisor Homer Case and Treasurer Fred Corzen and Clerk Dolores Little, AKA Dave Payne's aunt, I guess is third from left there. Third from the, yeah, third from left. Related to our funding, we're launching a new website, bctv.studio to attract more work for hire. We have part-time staff with availability and I'd like to see the studio expand our hours, both for the community and area businesses that need turnkey production support. Maintaining our funding is a top priority for me right now. I did take a trip recently, so this is kind of looking ahead. This is what's happened this year at what's going on with our funding. So this is me in Washington DC. It was a trip coordinated by the Alliance for Community Media. And the main thing that we were talking about during this visit was in addition to just basic education of our legislators, between the difference between what public television PBS is and community television is what we do, it was also making sure that we ask to maintain state control. I also wanted to put up this Xfinity Bill so that you could actually see where it's being charged for a cable subscriber. So in the bottom there, there are the franchise fees and the PEG fees. These fees are negotiated by the state of Michigan. That's about 20 states in the country do it that way. And these fees exist because of the Cable Communication Policy Act of 1984, which was established for the right to use the public right of way. The PEG and franchise revenues per household, this is our example here, 5% of the gross revenue is for franchise fees. Those fees can go for anything, not just cable expenses or community relations, but often in other communities, it's for public safety and roads. 2% is for PEG, so things like the refurbishment of the auditorium here and capital expenses. So what I'm looking to do, a week or two after I went to DC, Greg Black and I took a trip to Lansing to do pretty much the same thing in Lansing. And we're looking here at the Metro Act, which, the Metro Act is an act in Michigan, Michigan only. And it was created in 2002 to make it easier to stimulate the availability of high-speed internet connections. But 2002, YouTube wasn't registered until 2005. So we all know that technology has changed and we need legislation to keep up with technology. And that doesn't happen by magic, it happens by we, the people, asking for those changes. So that's what we're working on. I put up my blog there because I share a lot of these different updates with what's going on in this legislation and the trips that I take so that other people can see how easy it is to start this work and start making it happen. So that's where you'll find more information about these couple trips and the next steps that we need to take. Next step being some changes to this Metro Act, which is pretty significant to our community at this time because we have MetroNet, which will be starting construction in the township this summer, which is fantastic to be able to offer the competition and the option for the high-speed internet to our residents. But if we remember back to what happened in Madison Heights with a 40% drop in funding, this is what it looks like for us here. So we get $1.3 million in PEG and franchise fees. And if we experience a similar drop to Madison Heights, that will take us to $780,000 in five years. I believe we can make up some money in earned revenue, but I don't know if I can do half a million dollars. MetroNet will be laying 142 miles of fiber and we definitely welcome this competition, but we need to think about how this is going to impact our funding. So the way that MetroNet would pay is to operate within the rights of way is that they pay five cents a foot. So in order to lay the miles of cable, 142 miles of cable, they'll be paying $37,000 for that, right? These funds are collected by the state and distributed annually. So we'll get one check for $37,000. So what I'm proposing, what we're working on with our lobbyists is to change the Metro Act to something more like a dollar a foot. So that would be $750,000 in funding. And while one provider won't replace the franchise funding, it will certainly supplement it. And so that's what we're looking at to help legislation catch up with technology. And a dollar a foot is about average of what's going on in other states and so it's not unexpected. And when I was talking to, it's confusing, there's Metro Act, which is the act we want to change, and MetroNet is the company that's coming in to install fiber throughout the township. And I was talking to someone from MetroNet last week and he said, this is definitely the way things are headed. It's just that we need to get the legislation passed in order to, they understand they have to pay more to operate in the rights of way. So I was actually pretty encouraged by his phone call. I'm not going to leave you on a down note. So this presentation, of course, would not be complete without a video. Pretty much since I found out that there was a nationwide award for station of the year, it's been a goal of mine to achieve this distinction. We have two opportunities. One is for the Alliance for Community Media and the other is with the National Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors, NTOA. And for both of those competitions, we create a 10 to 15-minute highlight reel for evaluation. And I'm going to leave you with one minute of the best of BCTV. Serving the community since 1985, today Bloomfield Community Television supports six municipalities and more than 80,000 residents.
Good evening, Zaker fans, and welcome to Birmingham C. O. M. High School. I'm Brad Fetters.
In the old days, when motion pictures were first started.
And now here's Franklin.
At BCTV, we're not just a video production team, but a partner in showcasing the best of our community.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for the board for Carrie?
Just thank you. I got to tell you, your department has come such a long way. I remember back a couple of years, before you were there and your team was there. And it's become so progressive and the technology has changed so much and you've brought us where we need to be. And I know you'll take us beyond that. And you should all be commended for that.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, great work.
Thank you, okay.
I just want to, piggybacking on what Neil said, I think it can't be overstated how important it is that you've taken a leadership role in fighting for our money because we are going to lose it. And I was contacted by the treasurer of Madison Heights and gave her our numbers. And when she called me when I said it to her, she said, is this correct? I said, yeah, we've only lost 7%. She's like, how much did you lose? And she's like, what, 38% or something like that? So she couldn't believe it. But it's going to hit us all, you know, as technology progresses and as we, you know, I mean, I personally have cut the cable, cut the cord and it's going to happen more and more. But I appreciate that you've taken a leadership role in going to Lansing, going to Washington, fighting for us to get the money that we deserve, the money that we need. And so thank you on behalf of the board for that.
Well, it's just started, so yes, there'll be more work to do.
And, you know, we've got PAA working on it and we're right there with you, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. All right, next up, our annual report from Planning, Building Department, presented by Patty Bulker. Patty, this is it for you. Welcome.
It absolutely is. And I have a 45-minute video that I'd like to show.
Will you wait till we leave and then you can start? Patty, we're going to leave and then you can start the video.
Oh, thank you, okay. And I'll just summarize it then. The reports, the individual reports of the annual 2024 Planning, Building and Ordnance Reports have been in your packet. They're also posted to the website. Initially, these were created as a result of the planning bylaws that requires the Planning Commission to submit an annual report to the township board. So we do ask that you do accept the planning division's annual report as part of that obligation to meet the bylaws requirements. But as a whole, as you can tell, you know, the staff and the departments, the department within the staff department and their staffing have really worked on these reports over the years and have shown the activity levels from a historical perspective, but also on an annual basis. And so I certainly want to reach out, extend appreciation to Kelly Jacobson and Sharon Van Horn for their dedication in compiling all this information and putting this report together for you this year. The reports do summarize that the department as a whole and the individual divisions are very strong in the activity levels, the permit numbers, the response to complaints and also, you know, the record of accomplishments that the individual boards have shown through their annual or their monthly or bi-monthly meetings. And it's been an active year, 2024. So I won't delve into any of the reports. I'll answer any questions. But it's been a real pleasure to be able to present to the township board the annual reports on a given day and usually April, proving that the department has been responsive to the community and is very dedicated in their individual roles to serve township property owners and residents. So again, here's your report.
Thank you, Patty. Any questions for Patty?
Any comments? Chris?
Just a couple of comments. Again, I've said this before and again, I'm echoing Clerk Brook here on this. You and your department do amazing things. And again, all the boards you guys oversee, whether it's planning, zoning, what you deal with on a daily basis with our developers and our contractors, it's a testament. So this is just a small piece of us get to see it. But I hear all the time about how easy it is to work with the township. And again, people also used to talk about how it's a barrier. You were moving barriers during your time and you're going to continue with that legacy. You're retiring, which we're sorry to see, but you've built up such a good staff, which you've talked about here today, that it's pretty amazing to be able to see what you've done in 22 years and leave a lasting legacy on our community. So I want to thank you for this. This is just a small little token of it, but you've done so much for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I look forward to having at least one more Planning Commission meeting with you. So I know everybody on the Planning Commission is looking forward to that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, nothing else? Thank you, Patty.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And so we'll move on to...
Make a motion to accept it, right?
Make a motion that we approve.
Do you need the Planning Commission report?
Yes, please, probably the acceptance of the report.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the in-accepted report as presented.
Thank you, Neil. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we'll go back now to pull the items off the consent agenda and start with what I refer to as 11A. And it was approved the board minutes of April 14, 2025. Mark, you had a comment on that?
Yes, when we approved the change in the ordinance and the, as well as the change to the property over by South Boulevard and Scroll Road, historically, when that property was transferred, there was no adjustment in the taxable value. And now that we approved the change to residential, it's been several years, there's been no change other than the annual increases, even though changes on the property were added, such as the stormwater sewage drainage system, which is now present. It's sitting on the property. And I think what we've done unintentionally or not was we are now allowing, it would seem, the same benefits to other residents as well. That if we're developing or changing or modifying properties, that the taxes should not increase more than what's authorized by the state on an annual basis. And I hope that that change is transferred to other residents who at the same time might have bought business properties and converted it to a residential. So that's one comment. The other comment was on the water and sewer rates. I believe Noah had stated that the water...
Mark, you're talking about the minutes?
Talking about the minutes.
Where in the minutes, that first comment, I was trying to...
He's talking about the minutes from our board meeting of April 14.
Right, but where in the minutes is that?
It's in the video.
But not in the minutes?
It's an unintended consequence of what happened in the meeting.
Well, we're talking about the actual minutes that were provided, not any of the videos or comments, just what's in the minutes.
Even errors in made during the meeting.
Someone, you're saying someone made a comment at the meeting that you disagree with?
Well, Noah had said that there was a study with a 30-million gallon water reservoir required to meet daily requirements to purchase in the evening. And the SAQDA data does not justify 30-million gallon water.
He explained at that meeting where those are priced into the numbers we have. There's no separate line item.
No, this was, we had talked about putting in a water storage system and he said the size would be too large. And he said that it would be 30 million.
I know, Noah was talking about that. But I think what we have to do if we want to go that route is we have to pay for our engineering study to actually get the real numbers. And I think he was just giving us somewhat of an estimate what he thought might be. But I think, as I mentioned to you after the meeting, that there had to be a study done to get an accurate count on that. But if I go back to the, you're talking about the South Boulevard property, that question you're talking about would have to go to, we can deal with that with our assessor, Darren, and how we go through the process.
Okay.
Okay, so is there anything else in the minutes? All right, so can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion by Neil?
Yes, support.
Support. All in favor, say aye. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll go to what I'll call 11D. Consider Approval of 2025 Janoselli Safety Path Contract Award for Maple Road presented by Corey. Mark, you had a question on this?
I'd like, I think the general detail should be presented because it's expenditures.
Okay.
I move we approve as presented.
Support. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number 11E. Consider Approval of Telegraph Road Landscaping and Tree Planting Contract Award presented by Corey Almas. Mark, you had a question on that?
And again, we're spending funds. I think we should have, even if it's short, some type of presentation.
We had a presentation and it was about, what was it, Corey, about a month ago? And you gave us detailed, it came in at 78,000, but then the actual bid came in at 58,000, I believe.
And it was very detailed in the packet.
Right.
Very detailed. I make a motion that we approve as presented.
Okay. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll go to 11G. Consider Approval of 2025 Concrete Repair Programs submitted by Paul Horan, Department of Public Works. Mark, you had a question on that?
Again, it's funding. So I think it should be approved by the board.
Again, that was very detailed in the original presentation and in the packet. I make a motion we approve as presented. And just one quick comment is that there's a board policy on this topic, which was approved by the entire board, which, which specifically provides that, you know, that under certain conditions which are met here, spending is, is a appropriate consent agenda item.
And that's fine. I can ask for things to be removed, right?
Absolutely.
That's correct. Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number 11H. Consider Approval of 2025 Asphalt Resurfacing Program Submitted by Paul Horan. Again, DPW Superintendent. Mark, you had a question on that?
Yes, there's no competing bids, even if it's inferior product. It should be included in the packet and it was a one-bid item. I would rather have something approved because of the quality of the product and not to miss the bids, the other bids, other.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Is there a motion to approve?
The other bids are in the packet.
So, so moved. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll move to now 11I. Consider Approval of State Highway Mowing Contract Submitted by Adam Roos. Mark, you had a question on that?
Again, we're spending money. I'd prefer to have a short presentation by the individuals who are asking for the funds.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
The information and backup was there, was very clear and detailed. I make a motion that we approve.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And item number 11J. Consider Approval of Revelation, Resolutions of Street Lighting Assessment District Submitted by Martin Brook, our township clerk, with noted SADs. Mark, you had a question on that?
The SAD amounts?
Okay.
They're, they are included, but because it is an SAD, I'd rather have the information presented publicly and not in a written format.
I move us approve the Carillion Hills Chestnut Run and Knob Hill SAD assessments as presented.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we had, we'll call it 11K. Accept Treasurer's Corley Report Submitted by Michael Showstack. Mark, you had a question on that?
Yes. I found that the board, the items in the board packet at the end, the OPEB requirements are to report on an accounting basis by the sub-accounts. That detail is not in the report. So, and that's inconsistent with what the board approved a while back.
Any other comments?
No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, five to one. Thank you. And then we'll go to 11L.
Payroll and vouchers.
Payroll and vouchers for April 48.
My standard no vote stands.
Okay. Same. I just have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Five to one. Thank you. Okay. Having gone through, I think we got all the items off the consent agenda. Now we'll move into motion to move into closed session, to consider entering closed session for the purpose of strategy negotiations connected with negotiations of our collective bargaining agreement presented by Michael Showstack. Motion to go into. So moved. Support.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, actually, this one we don't. We don't need a roll call vote on C.
Okay.
You can do it if you would like, but you don't need it.
On negotiations.
On 2681C, you do not need.
Yeah, he's talking about statute law.
Oh, statute. Oh, gotcha. That one. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay. So we are now in private session. Vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Six to nothing. So we have now in session. Should we stay here? Do you want to move? And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.